...in City Hall, Council of Chambers located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Embarl City, Texas, on Tuesday, July the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at six, like, three P. M. I called, ordered a road call to my lab.
April Burns? Jake is here.
Oh, he's here.
Send the keys out, but we have a quorum. There's no citizen comments, so we'll go to new business, one A, discussion regarding the FY twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four budget. You know, city managers? Over for a discussion?
So the department has met a few times regarding the budget. We went through the revenue, and everybody put in their wish list, and then after that, we started cutting and making pretty what we thought was the most important things first. This is everything that's included in this budget. We have a twenty-two percent increase in our medical insurance for all. We've put in an eight-point-one percent COLA based on the Social Security Administration. These things for these departments, we're using money out of the capital improvement fund to buy some other capital improvements, and these are the items that are not included that we cut out. So I'm going to open the floor for comments and suggestions and thoughts.
Let me bring my glasses. Just going through the budget, there's a couple I don't throw out for the... Nah, I think that's... I just can't get it all out of the...
Oh, you want to add something?
Parks Board, I think, needs an allocation of some sort. I don't know if it's... I don't see it or not, but I didn't see it. And also, I just wanted to bring up the question of the animal holding pens upgrade set apart. Is this a necessary item or not? I did bring before the Parks Board yesterday, and you know, there's where this possibility we could do a thirty thousand dollar grant from the Wilbury Fund and a Wilbury Club. So if that's a priority, but it's not a priority, it's okay. They mentioned the volleyball court, so I just need to know that. So these two items I will bring up, I'm not seeing them. Maybe I'll let you discuss them.
Cindy Kane. Bye, Karen. Well, did you... How much does the Park Board already have?
The Park Board has fifty-three hundred dollars in their special fund account. Um, I think that's a good start. Let them start, see what they want to do, and then on into the year, if we want to move money, I think we can, but I think if we put a lot of money before them, before they even know what they're doing, I don't know how smart that is.
We did talk about grants last night, too, and that's something that they're wanting to pursue, so that may be an option.
So let me make sure I understand correctly. All of the items that are in red over here, these are the items that we cannot work into the budget, or they're, like, off the table for the year, or these are the items that we're going to discuss?
The... There... It's not off the table. If you want to... This is... I just tried to get you a way...
It's like a wish list.
Yeah, it's not off the table. If you want to move something over, instead of what we've done, you have every right to do that. This is just everything we've cut out of this year's budget.
Gotcha.
Just to make it balanced.
Just to make it balanced.
So you're able to substitute if you want something, we just have to move something?
Yeah.
So what we have listed in here, like, for example, the police department, these are the top priorities that we fit into the budget?
Yeah.
This is what's included over on the left in green, and then what's red on the right is kind of like the wish list that we'd like to add if we get more money.
Okay.
Or needs that they have.
Let me make sure I understand.
Can we start off by department, let them talk a little bit about this, and see if we have better ideas?
Sure.
Does anyone have a spare?
Any department prefer to go first?
Keith?
All right, Keith is here.
Mine's going to face longer, you know.
All right, you're awesome.
One thing I'd like to do, Keith, is the next question from you about lease versus buying vehicles. There's been a lot of discussion on this, and I'd love for yours.
All right, you go. Phil, first?
Okay, as far as the street department is, um, I've canvassed my employees as far as the equipment we use, equipment we need, and we've narrowed it down to, we have a brand-new backhoe with a narrow dirt-cutting bucket, or, I'm sorry, rock-cutting bucket, and we really need a wider dirt-cutting bucket for ditch clearing. It's more efficient that way. It doesn't have the teeth, so less cleanup, and then a thumb attachment for whenever we have trees down, that thumb attachment on the back of the backhoe can grab the big logs and put it up inside of the dump truck. We currently have a really old one that's bent up really bad. It's probably twenty years old or something, and barely usable. We still use it, but we really need a new one of those. Now, on the right side, what I can fit into the budget is my fence around my shop. I can't tell you how old that is. Mickey or Joey might be able to tell you that, thirty-plus years maybe. But there's definitely security issues. It's falling down, and dire need, I got a quote for thirty-five thousand from Pinnacle Fence. We need a new zero turn as well. The two we have are still operational, and we're just piecing one of them together, but we can probably get that to last another year. The wood chipper, all these trees that pick up, it's almost a guarantee after every storm there's at least one tree down, if not several. And currently, we... We're not supposed to burn the trees. We kind of get away with it, but we need a wood chipper to chip it up and be our item, so... And then the portable message board, that is going to be very useful, not only in my road work, morning drivers, hey, there's a road ahead, but July Fest, Christmas Parade, any event that we hold in the city, we can use that as well. But again, that's... That's nicety, really, but it would come in very useful when it comes to my road work. But again, we have other things that are way more important in our eyes. So when it comes to the Parks Department, the irrigation for trees, we do have a memorial tree program that currently does not have irrigation. So we spend three to four hours every other day watering these trees because the residents spend two hundred, two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars, and they expect their trees to grow, so we have to maintain those. So irrigation would help alleviate our workload. Skate park lighting, dog park lighting, soccer lighting, all those have been talked about for several years. We just can never manage to get it in the budget, and those really need to happen. The skate park currently doesn't have any. Dog park has a little bit right now. I say barely enough. It could use a little beef up. The soccer field is... We don't have a league, but we have a lot of people using that for practice, and it's during soccer season, it's every night, so we really need to whiting up their host kids. I've kind of talked about shade structures for the disc golf course and/or the walking trails. So I would like to see... And it's not a big structure, doesn't huge, just maybe a small structure with some, a park bench, so they can sit down for a few minutes and then continue on whatever they're doing. So... And that's just a rough number. That would only give us a couple. I mean, honestly, real world, eight or ten, but this will only give us a couple, ten thousand dollars will only give us a few. Then a fertilizer spreader that helps my Parks Department get the grass growing and maintain all the fields. The aug refrain are currently... The one we have is very old, and we're welding on it a lot to make it hold up, so we need that one. And then the trees for the walking trail, we can kind of incorporate that almost into the memorial tree program, but that memorial tree program doesn't give us enough. And if y'all walk on the backside of the tennis court with our path around there, it has absolutely no shade structures whatsoever, no shade trees, so I was just thinking it'd be nice to put three or four, maybe Big Oak or something out there. So here in ten years or so, there'll be something. But that was just my thoughts. And then on the other side, for what we can't find, we did install a new volleyball court last year, and that sand just hardened up. It wasn't the right sand, so we need to remove that stuff and get the good beach volleyball sand, which is very expensive and kind of hard to come by. It's going to be difficult to find and resource, but we need that. The volleyball lighting, we need some lights out there for volleyball. The trencher, that would help us do the irrigation for the trees. That would help us run all these lines that we need, and honestly, would help the street department side as well when we need to do something, but that's a dual purpose, but mainly would be used for irrigation on the street department side unless we source it out to a plumber, because it does need to be a licensed plumber or an irrigation person. But whatever is that, shade structures goes back to, I've already discussed, split the cost, and then, again, more trees for the walking trail. I've already discussed that as well. I do want to touch on the Christmas banners right below that. My shop is the one that puts those up every year, and I've been here four years. You know, when I got here, they were in old shape, and now they're in no shape. We cannot put these up, period. So we... This year, we will not have any type of Christmas decorations unless we buy some. They're in dire need. And that's it for me. Any questions from the council or...
Do y'all currently have a trencher?
We do not. We've rented trenchers from... You rented the time we've needed it, so... But there's definitely a dire need of one with all these trees and the irrigation that we need to do.
Definitely seems like it'd help.
Yes. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
The Christmas banners. It seems like rather than mine, I mean, we need to buy the materials, but is that something that could be a community project, maybe headed up by the beautification committee?
I would come... I'm going to refer that to the city management team. I mean, I'm flexible, so...
We can ask?
Whatever help, I'm willing to accept, but I'll give that to city management, too.
Okay. I'm just thinking that the community could, you know, have a design contest, and then maybe they can participate with the beautification committee to make them.
Do you know what the cost of the banners would be approximately? Any idea?
Well, I mean, we have... Oh, no, we don't.
Did we have?
I mean, I just had no idea. We're talking two thousand, ten thousand? I mean...
I would push ten to fifteen.
Really?
We were looking at a company that actually comes in, and you do, like, a lease program with them for, like, three years. They come in, they put the banners up, they take the banners down. Any other Christmas decorations? They do all of that, and you just...
They probably store them as well?
Yes, they handle everything, but I don't have a definitive cost for that. But that's what we are looking at to do. That keeps Ernie and his crew from having to put banners up and take banners down.
And just to let you all know, again, we don't mind doing that. The street department is six guys, and with being on three thirty-four traffic, I have one guy in the backhoe, one guy in the basket being lifted up, and then two other vehicles for traffic control. So that's my whole crew for two days is put them up and then two days take them down. But that's what we do. That's what we're... I understand that's what we're here to do, but it is very time-consuming. Now, that's just the banners that you see on the poles. We still have our arch over there by the fireplace department that's still usable. We're still going to put that up. We have the Christmas tree for the city hall and a wreath that we put up, so those are still operational. I'm just speaking about the banners that go up on the telephones, because they are getting beat up by the way in, and then taking them down. Sometimes they get scratched or damaged, so they're just constant years and years of use. That's the only thing I'm speaking about right now.
I could not even tell you when the last time we ordered banners. Have...
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, it's been years.
Which is a good thing, meaning they last a long time.
Right.
And we take care of our stuff.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, my... We do have storage shed, and we have classes we end up putting them in, but the storage sheds are not critter-proof, so we do have been met with a few critters here and there, just nature of the beast, but, yeah, my guys have to take care of their equipment, and that's why we have even equipment that's nineteen eighty-four models still being used. So any other questions or returns? Yes, sir.
Could I just talk about budgets you submitted? There's a line called Maintenance of Streets.
Yes, sir.
Fifty thousand this year, fifty-five next year, and then I guess there's the sales tax money. Is this the two parts of money for all road construction?
Yes, sir. So what that is, is what I use Maintenance of Streets, and what I'm going to call my favorite budget, it comes out of the general fund. I buy, I wouldn't say popple material, our tack coats, road base, anything to do with that. Now, our big projects that we do, I would say Welch Road Repair, that came out of the street sales tax. All the chip seal roads that we do come out of the street sales tax, because we have several hundred thousand dollars collected through that, so that's... I'm able to do a lot of road work for that. The fifty and fifty-five thousand, that just maybe kind of buys small materials and little things that I can do out of the budget. But... And I say little compared to the several hundred thousand that I can spend, because one... One sort of tack coat for popple repairs is twenty-five hundred dollars. A load of cold-mixed asphalt, I can't remember, it's a hundred dollars a ton. I usually get about twenty-four tons at a time, so, you know, all that adds up a lot. So I do heavily rely on both.
We got this... May email from you stating that you spend over seven hundred and forty thousand dollars a year on roadway repairs, so that would be out of all the funds.
I think that email mainly was strictly out of the street sales tax money, because the kind of the popple stuff and the smaller items, I don't really speak out. It's only monthlies that, yeah, we basically bubble, so that's what you should kind of focus on with that money, really.
Is there... What about the priorities for the sales tax money now that Welsh Land has done? Where do you stand on coming up with a priority for what's next?
So I've discussed repairing Harbor Point Road, and again, that's going to be... Has to be done in phases. Legendary needs to be repaired as well. Luther Lane needs to be repaired, but I believe, and I haven't discussed it with city management yet, because I'm still midsummer, heavy working on this year's, but probably October, November timeframe, I'm going to discuss with city management on Harvey on that. But again, Harbor Point Road is a big one, and Legendary Lane is a big one as well. There's a lot of our turtle roads, I'm going to say off the top of my head, Commodore, Downey Main. There's a few roads in Loom Bay, there's some roads in Tammerack that are... That need it as well, but again, that needs to be discussed and prioritized.
At our next budget workshop, I'm hoping that we can have any tweaks or adjustments to the general fund budget, and we'll also have the special fund budgets to talk about as well.
Any other questions for this budget?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Good, ma'am.
You do a great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council, nice to meet you, guys. Mine's pretty simple. The fire department, last year we ended up getting the boat and some other things. I was trying to gate back for the police department for their needs, and if the street had a couple topics that they wanted to cover. Right now, all we've got included is for mobile radios from the switch over to seven hundred megahertz, which is the same problem that the police department's having with their cars. We ended up getting handheld radios off of a grant, and they get out fine when you're outside, but as soon as you sit in the car, get a fire truck, you're going to the house, you lose your ability for communication on it at times. So we came up with fifteen thousand dollars to kind of cover. The radios are running anywhere from around thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred a radio. Grants are out there. I believe PD is also going to be applying for one also. Paging system with this change over to seven hundred megahertz and getting away from our VHF, it's all still working, and it's still usable. The licenses are up to date on it, but with that being said, our storm sirens can't be activated off a seven hundred megahertz system, nor can the paging for the fire department at this time. So PD has a huge console that's in the way for dispatch that really serves one-two purposes, paging us out.
Boat anchor.
And our setup sirens that are just two buttons, you know?
And the consoles are big.
It's that big. Takes up so much of the boat for dispatch. And the small units, more like a telephone size for residential telephone, pick up the handset. You can use it as the mic and listen also, as a radio itself, you punch in a code, sirens either go off or cancel them out the same way. Same with...
This is the newer encrypted system that was started, like, a couple of years ago?
Yes.
The last couple of years? Okay.
And it just very... Went live for Gun Barrel in February. And it's got issues, but everybody in Henderson County are facing these same issues, which is one of the last of the cities to actually start utilizing it. With that, over on our wish list, as I said, I was getting back for wish, you know, we've got some dated trucks. Fire department trucks are always maintained, you know, they're expected to be in operable condition, so we just put off anything like that as a five-year plan. Right now, for the fire department, I think we were juggling between two different storm sirens, one for Lakeside Acres or one for Harbor Point.
That's to replace or to add?
To replace, yeah. They're... You can almost slip a coin. They're both problematic. The Lakeside Acres one, you open the door, it's batteries, it falls off the ground, just for corrosion, you know? Harbor Point, the door's nice on it, but half the time the siren doesn't come on, you know, from lightning strikes. There's so many different variables, a lot of it storm-related. Power surges on their transformers, because they still... They get power from the street. They charge up batteries with individual chargers, so if the power goes off, they revert to batteries, and then you've got four batteries that can fail. The new sirens that we've been purchasing are all solar. You know, the solar chargers can go out on that. You could have a ton of cloudy weather that could cause not to be able to maintain enough to keep the radios up. We haven't had that problem yet, because we haven't set them off with a failure, but that was over on the wish list. We'll just put it back up for next year.
Does that cost for both of them or for one?
No, that's for one.
That's for one.
That's for one siren. But currently, our system that we have was put in in nineteen eighty... Nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six. So they well served what they're supposed to... You can't buy parts for them. We've got a company out of Oklahoma that when I can't figure something out on, they'll come out and, you know, they'll have a charger left in a box that they bought new on shelf stuff, so that's how we maintain what we've got. Do you guys have any questions on regular line item issues? I think I increased... I asked for an increase on my maintenance of auto with heavy-duty trucks, you know, tires nowadays that used to be three hundred and fifty dollars for the front fire truck tires now seven hundred and fifty. It's so easy to go into some of those subdivisions, different areas, we're in the local city, and, you know, catch a spike in the tire that takes two tires out while you're riding in. It can impact, you know, a thousand dollars, a pot fifteen, a hundred, just like that on the trucks. We have so many different maintenances that we're required to do to keep our ISO rating down. It burns through maintenance auto so fast. I think a regular PM's about twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars on a fire truck. No problems with the truck, no white blaze, no tires, no lighting issues. Then you've still got to be pumping testing on annually. That impacts heavily, or if there's any failures, there usually is something that seems to fail. Other than that, any questions? That's about all I had online.
Is the maintenance for the new boat from last year, is that just built in the maintenance of auto?
Maintenance of other.
It'd be maintenance of other.
Maintenance of... Oh, I see it now. Okay.
And hopefully, we don't have any problems without.
Sure.
So that's what that's for, five years. It's increased our fuel probably by, for the sense we pay, maybe close to a thousand bucks with air shows up. But that's something that also on a monthly report to show when you send one of us to boat or boat fuel. And we do buy fuel from Safco for it versus our pump, just because there's no alcohol in the fuel network within the boat, in case it sticks for long periods of time, but fuel doesn't go bad as quick.
I have a general question. In an emergency situation, can your radio... Can you two communicate by radio, or are they separate systems?
They are separate. They're separate systems. They're one system in a core, but they're on two different, I don't know what you call user IDs. It's the way it's all done, voice over IP and stuff through the county.
Which, to me, was a complete step backwards, because they used to be able to communicate. It makes no sense to me.
Me neither.
The only way to cure that is if you're in Embarl City where to say, hey, we're going to buy it on board, and we'll put an antenna wherever it would be feasible, which they require another tower. I don't know what that cost would even be, but it would be half a million bucks probably to fix that. With that being said, any county, anywhere in Henderson County that would come through our area, that would include an extra tower where there'd be no dead spots where there is now. The closest tower to us is Tener Regional Water. Department of Labor passed a ban. That's where the actual DPS tower is for Henderson County, and I believe Kaufman's about to put one in May, maybe, at Kaufman's expense, but right now, nobody can intercommunicate. Henderson County can, you know, cross over Kaufman, use their towers. It's in the works.
We can't talk to them either. I mean...
Ridiculous.
That's the same with us, we have...
Scary. It's dangerous.
Yeah, so I'm just picturing, you guys are out, and they see something, and they've got to call it into dispatch. Dispatch has to get ahold of you. Dispatch has to get a hold of you. So it's going to go through a tree rather than directly?
We call it into dispatch. Dispatch then has to call Kaufman County to get the information to Maybank, unless it's during the day.
Yeah, anything more for us? We have one radio that's set up that we bought years ago when Kaufman went in on the seven hundred system and put those in first. I'm going to say probably four years ago, we bought a radio that's keeping the engine to Maybank, Maybank burning out. They still page out off of their old VHF system out of Kaufman to Maybank, Skerry, Terre, Coeur d'Alene, uh, departments. But then from that point, the fire man's are on the radios with the new seven hundred system, which is, you know, five, seven years old already. So Governor Earl, we'll hear and page out on Maybank on our old system. And then we just think no one showed up to the house fires. We think we're the first ones in, you know, here's everybody, gents there and all, you know, considering using their seven hundred. Where we're going to send a boat. I can't hear what PD does. You can't hear what I do. There's no real scan feature yet that the county's allowed between fire and police because of what you're saying on the, the user ID being like scripted where.
Encrypted.
Yeah. I guess where people can't get a pager and do seven hundred and pick that up.
Yeah.
But now on Kaufman's side, they, they don't have it encrypted like that. They can keep fire unencrypted and police encrypted or shows the parts, not use a certain. This is really a radio committee issue with Henderson County and their control.
Because, babe, when we got to use another agency that controls what we can and can't do on our radio system.
Absolutely.
I mean, we have, we have no control over it. If they don't allow it, we can't do it.
So.
What's the fix?
Yeah.
I think time.
Time?
It's just going to take a while for them to get all their bugs out of their system, get some different complaints coming in from different cities or departments that are using it, to where the radio committee will allow, you know, a scan feature, because everyone's programming on radio. We have to wait for them to come, program every user ID, which equals every individual radio.
So that's the Henderson County Radio Commission?
Committee. They're all for that.
Which is part of the sheriff's office, basically.
That's interesting.
Not to be the police department law enforcement account, but when it comes, when it comes to the committee, when they were throwing this idea five years ago for Henderson County, the fire departments, the cities that have fire departments in that network foot and bill also, I think all the fire departments ended up being just a means of bringing this price down per unit for the county's big wish list because it was costing several million to get set up. And we were forced to use it for going to communicate with Penn Springs or communicate with Cool. To where right now, you know, VHF radio on the old channel for Maybank. And at some point, some dispatch will finally answer, you know, the, the call from Kaufman on VHF. It's not a priority what they're listening for, but Henderson County got totally away from it, so it is what it is.
I understand the reasoning, but.
It's an acceptable impression.
I do not understand the reasoning.
Well, the old system we had, to me, works better than this new state-of-the-art technology that we get.
No question. Absolutely.
Like, I don't have a mobile radio in my car, so all I work off is portable. You get in the car, the portable's sitting right here. Now you got the car all around you. You can't, you can't talk to them. I can hear dispatch. They can't hear me ninety percent of the time. You know, standing outside, if you're on one side of a tree, it might not work. You walk to the other side of the tree, it'll work. You go into Walmart, it don't work at all.
But dispatch will tell you, hey, we can't hear you. Could you step over a little bit? Because the difference with digital and analog, obviously, is the static and analog, you hear, but you can kind of hear something. Digital's just like what you see on TV where it's sort of, or nothing.
Just like a cell phone. Yeah.
How does it go?
I don't know. Any questions?
No, I have a good understanding. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So just to keep talking about the radio side for a second, we've, you know, I put in, we don't have the mobile in-car radios. When they ordered our radios, all they ordered us was these portables. So I just found out that there's going to be a grant opportunity that's opening up in December. Okay? I'm still asking to approve that in case we don't get the grant. Some of those grants, you got to have a property tax base and all of that to qualify for. I don't know the stipulations behind this grant yet, but even if that gets approved for October, I'm planning on holding off on doing anything until December when that grant opens up to see if we can get the grant for the funding on it. But if not, I need, need that for the backup so these officers can have communications.
And the grant would be how much?
It'll be for all, all of it, hopefully.
Thirty-four thousand.
And that's, like I said, that's just for the radios that go in our cars.
Not on your person?
No, these are all new. We, well, I say they're new. They're what, two and a half years old?
Two and a half years old and been programmed since February.
Yeah. Yeah. They sat there on chargers throughout the PD for two years just charging because they were worthless.
And the in-car cameras, are, are those new or replacements?
That, that's going to be all brand new in-car cameras. All the cameras that are in our cars now are obsolete. They don't work. When they quit working, we were told they weren't getting replaced from previous administration. I've gotten letters from the DA's office calling us, you know, because we get in a pursuit, we do a traffic stop. Everything nowadays, if you don't have video, it's probably not going to get prosecuted. Okay? And we're in car pursuits all the time. Every traffic stop we do DWIs, you know, you stop a DWA on a traffic stop, that video is crucial. Because your body cameras are good, but if I'm standing here talking to her, it's probably got about this much of her. We get in a fight, it's got about this much of her. You get in a fight in front of a squad car, you've got the whole, the whole view of everything. The traffic stop, the violation prior. Because those come on, you can program them for different tasks, but most of them come on about thirty seconds prior to you turning your lights on. Okay? So, because it's constantly recording, but once you turn your lights on, it goes back thirty seconds. So all of that's there, the initial reason for turning your lights on, all of that. And like I said, I've got letters from the DA's office calling us because they want these videos and we don't have access to do it. Our server crashed on that system and half of the cameras in the cars didn't work to begin with. Okay? We just got new body cameras this year. The car cameras interact with those new body cameras. So when we turn the lights on in the car, it activates the in-car camera. It also activates the body camera. If I'm standing in here dealing with somebody and my body camera's on and one of my partners walk in the door, I'll automatically turn his body camera on so they don't have to remember to. It's a pretty neat system.
And then the, the server, is, is that still an issue or?
The camera server's gone. It's fried.
So you need a whole new server as well?
No, with this camera system, it's all going to the cloud.
Gotcha.
It's all live and secured. That's part of the storage and everything related, related to it. There's a yearly fee that, that goes with that for the, for the storage stuff. But that is, that, that's for the cameras, having them installed in the first year of service and maintenance.
How much is that?
Thirty-four oh fifty-four? No.
No, nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen thirteen, nineteen thousand.
What about license plate readers? Do you think about that in the budget this year at all or?
No. Those are very expensive. And I am looking at this, but that's going to be another grand opportunity.
Cost will come down with time.
I love it.
That's a national system, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah. And the, the camera itself, they charge you a fortune for. It's, I think they're anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars a camera. So, but I am looking at the grants to put a system on two squad cars, and I'm also looking at another grant to put them on poles at every entrance to the city. The feds make a lot of cases off of the license plate readers, you know, because everybody's got felony warrants and everything else are going into that system. You got a car that's stolen that goes into that system. They come in through Harbor Point. Dispatch gets a notification and a picture of the vehicle, hey, this just passed your camera, headed this away. So we already know what we're dealing with by the time we get to it.
Isn't, uh, isn't EDC looking at a, a system like that to track where people are coming from to buy in our city? Is there any way to partner up with them and maybe cut the cost for the city?
It's possible. Ours is on the law enforcement side. Theirs is on the civil side, so I don't know how the two of those will intermingle. I had to do some research on that. Because I think theirs is a different system. But I'll have to do some checking to find out. I don't know. I do know we can partner with some POAs and stuff if they want to buy cameras, and then we can get them put in and we can monitor them. Walmart, if they wanted to put them in at Walmart, we could monitor them. So there's a lot of stuff, a lot of cases are getting filed off those license plate cameras. They've been a major asset along the course. Lexi Pole, that is a policy-based program. You know, my goal before I leave here is to get this place accredited by the Texas Police Association. In order to do that, there's a whole lot of things that's got to change, and a part of that's our policies. Okay? Every chief that comes in, whether they're from this state or another state, they rewrite the policies to whatever state they came from. That has no bearing on our state here as far as the laws go or anything else. This policy system is done through the National Chiefs of Police Association, through Lexi Pole. They've got chiefs from all over the country. They've got attorneys from everywhere that read and review every one of these policies. They're all approved for each state that they go into. Basically, they'll write our entire department policy. Okay? Every year when the legislature meets and they change the laws and all the different regulations that go with it, whether it be state, federal, whatever, all of those go through them. They write the policies, they send it out to us. Whoever the chief is gets a, gets the notification of this policy. There's a deal for them to approve it. There's a deal for them to edit it, to go for our city. Then we send it back to them. Their attorneys look over and say, yes, it's within the guidelines. We can do this. And then it gets actually sent in our policy. Okay? Right now, our policy's in a three-ring notebook. This policy is all online, so every one of our officers have access to it twenty-four seven. They're out on a traffic stop, don't know what to do policy-wise, they pull it up right there on their phone. This also pertains to training on our policies. They will send out little tests every month related to our policies to these officers with a little scenario, a policy, questions that they got to answer, and they've got to pass these every month. And it's a deal so they can't come back and say, well, I didn't know the policy. And that's a part of the accreditation program. There is a bill that's on the governor's desk right now. Wanted to mandate every agency in the state of Texas to be accredited within three years. I hope that doesn't get signed this year. It's going to get signed. I just hope it doesn't this year because it's going to be hard for us to do it in three years here financially. There will be some funding that's going to come with that if, if the governor signs a bill on it. So we'll be able to get some funding through that to, to make that happen also. What else we got?
The stuff in the middle.
Stuff's in the middle. The file system, for those, some of you have come up there and seen the file system. We've got now mixed-match file cabinets. I've got twenty thousand pounds worth of files in an attic up there that I've got dispatcher signing up. Crawl space about this big up into the attic whenever we have open record requests that we need to get. The file system I'm looking at will end up taking an office out that's in the middle where dispatch center is. There'll be one of the rolling file cabinets like you got at your doctor's offices that will hold at least ten years' worth of our files. Also built into that file system is a weapons storage on the back wall where all of our long guns, our tasers, our ammunition, all of that stuff will be secured. It'll have a roll-down, lockable door because right now I've got an entire office that we're wasting just for gun storage and everything else to where I can secure it into this. File system also. Remodel, that's thirty thousand dollars for a remodel. That's to remove walls and everything, open up dispatch for that file system where everything is in one room so that dispatch can, all of our warrants, all of our criminal trespass warnings, all of that stuff will be in that file system, which will put it right there behind dispatch where they've got full access to the file system and everything.
And then your stuff up here that.
What we got on the red side, police pole or from the dispatch console? Dispatch console I took out this budget. That's fifty-seven thousand. That's the sit-and-stand console. You know, they're in there for, every dispatch across the nation is going to these consoles. And it's the entire console, the computers, the radios, everything. You lift a button and the entire console sets up and stands and works. Or you can push it, go back down, it's set and work.
So the remodel thirty K is or is not in the budget?
It is. The console's the only thing that's not in the budget.
Can you tell me where that thirty thousand dollar number came from? Have you already, what's that?
For the remodel?
Yeah.
That's coming off the top of my head. I've got three contractors that are looking, that are giving us a bid. They used to own a construction company, so I kind of know where they're going to go with what they got to do. That thirty thousand could be a little lower. It might be five thousand more. Just, I, I think we can get it done for that or less. So.
I think what we keep forgetting is that inflation has been a good news on the plus side. There's also bad news on the negative side because it's costing the city significant more to do to run its operation. But maybe more, it may end up being a wash once all over.
But that, that, that thirty thousand includes removing four walls, shimming up the attic space that's up there. Great sheet rock in paint, texture, new flooring.
And then there were some security doors that also needed to be replaced right there?
There's some that need to be fixed. I don't think we need to replace them. But, but we need to get a, which is minor, just, you know, dispatch, somebody comes to the front door, they need to end dispatch, you got to get them all the way out and around the hall. We need to get a button put in there so they can push a button and they can come in the door. There's some little things like that, but it's, that's minor. The doors, I think, will be fine. I don't think we need to, you're talking about the Sallyport?
Yes.
Yes. Those do need to be replaced. Every one of them were split down the middle. Sallyport had been used in two years. Okay? Because it quit opening, so they just pulled the deal and dropped the opener on it. Because when you do try to open them, the door starts wobbling so much, it just shuts down the door opener. So the doors need to be replaced. That's about twenty-four hundred dollars, I think is what they gave me a bid to get, get this Sallyport back up and running. What else we got? Cars? I don't know if I did y'all these or not. From American National Leasing. I've talked to Enterprise. Enterprise won't do anything with us unless the entire city gives them a commitment over the next couple of years to go with all of their cars. So I quit talking with them, and that's who a lot of your places are using nowadays. Kaufman County, every vehicle Kaufman County owns is leased to Enterprise. And right now, we've got in the budget for two cars, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's for the car, new equipment, new everything. The cars we're running right now are two thousand and sixteen Chargers. And I think, I don't know the exact number, but I've spent close to fifty, maybe a little more than fifty thousand dollars on maintenance this year. I know I've spent, since January last year, I spent over fifteen thousand just on one car keeping it running. The equipment's starting to break down because those cars sit out here running twenty-four seven. You know, if they're not driving, they're sitting there idling. They're not, they're not made to last for eight years on patrol. With this lease program, I can lease six cars, which would be two trucks, four tacos, for about a hundred, hundred and ten thousand a year. Okay? And that's fully equipped. New equipment, new everything, ready to go. Only thing we'll have to add would be our radars, our mobile radios, and our in-car camera system. But that'll include new lights, new everything, new stickers. The, most of these, these cars will be under warranty basically the whole time we have them, so the only thing we got to do basically is change the oil and maybe set, put a set of tires on them when we got them. Okay? And on, on this form, we got the top, let's look at the Chevy Cru-Cad truck. At the top, that fifty-seven three-three-nine, that's the price of just the truck. Okay? The fifteen thousand that's below that is for the equipment. The lights, the console boxes, the safety partitions, everything that's got to go in that vehicle. So the total, I'm looking at the three-year deal on the truck, and I'll tell you why here in a second, but it, it, looking at the three-year, you've got one at the end that we owe twelve thousand dollars and we can keep the truck. Okay? Or at the end of that, we can pay a dollar and keep the truck. Okay? Looking at that, because our admin call. Looking at that, because our admin cars, you know, we've got, I've got a 2020 Durango that's got 30,000 miles on it. That'll, that's, we paid for it, that'll last us the next 10 years, okay? The other vehicles that I've got in CID are hand-me-downs from patrol that have 100-plus thousand miles on them, they're breaking down non-stop. Doing this on a three-year deal, at the end of it, we can pay a dollar, we can keep those two trucks that might have 50,000 miles on them. We can roll those into CID. We have no truck whatsoever at the police department. So, we go work a big burglary, we recover property at a pawn shop, we got no way of recovering that property and bringing it back without sticking lawn mowers and stuff and a Charger in the back of a Durango. So, my, my goal is to get two trucks, those trucks will actually be used on patrol, they're pursuit-rated vehicles. And then the Tahos, these guys are out here 12 hours a day, I don't know if any of y'all have ever sat in a Charger for 12 hours. But those ride like a tank, very uncomfortable. Tahoe sit like a truck, it's a lot more comfortable, there's a lot more room in there, especially when you've got this gun belt and everything on, being cramped in that little bitty space. It's hard to get seat belts on and off, it's hard to move and breathe in them. But like I said, we can lease six vehicles, fully equipped, for 125,000. For, if we do the three years on the Chevy truck and four years on the Tahos, okay? It's 125,558 a year. Or we can buy two brand-new ones for 150,000 here, for 150,000. And then I still got four that were-
We've never looked at leasing in the city at all.
Because it's debt.
It's okay, it's debt, what does that mean, what, what are the implications and why would you set up one?
Well, until recently, just a few years ago, we didn't have the extra money to spend on debt. What this will do is, if we're going to, and lease is a good, I mean, it does look really good on paper. We don't have a property tax, we know, we have no way to secure that debt. They don't like you to secure it with sales tax because sales tax is so volatile. But that's all we have, we don't have a property tax to pay debt. So, we try to stay away from debt, that's why we purchase what we can to stay away from debt. If we get into a lease program, that's $100,000 that's got to come out of the general fund every year. Where right now we're buying cars every other year. And it's completely up to you, if you want to look at debt, we're going to have to cut $100,000. Because you can't pay debt out of the capital improvement fund because that fund will be gone in four years. We're going to have to budget for it every year.
Well, did you budget for 150,000 for two cars?
We did out of the capital improvement fund.
So, the 100,000 there, it's to buy two cars rather than lease six?
No, no, it's out of the capital improvement fund, we're moving money-
They can be used in cars.
To purchase them, yeah, we moved it into the general fund to purchase those cars.
That's 150,000.
To buy two.
Well, I, I think there's some level of concern here about how many vehicles can you put on the street, how safe are our communities, reliable, do we have equipment to respond? I'd hate to get calls, well, we just couldn't be there, we didn't have our cars, just for that. I just think the police department has, should have that highest priority, these kind of vehicles. Fire, the kind of work that you do, fire being next, so that's just my thought, that I, I really think that we should look at leasing as an option.
And the, the reason that I'm looking at the three-year on the Chevy truck, because the payment on that's higher, it's probably the highest payment out of the deal, is because in three years, we can pay a dollar and keep that truck. So, if animal control needs a truck, or if code enforcement needs a truck, we can pay a dollar and keep that truck, and-
But the debt continues, in four years, the debt drops down from 100 to, what did you say, 80?
Yes, because we're not-
The debt, the debt continues, it does not go away.
Yeah, once that lease is up, then we'll get, those cars get traded in, we get, get new ones, okay? But if you'll look at, let's say that first line, okay, no, let's look at the Tahos, okay? On the third one there where it says 70,000, the yellow 70,296, that $9,000 is basically what the leasing company is guaranteeing us that truck, that Tahoe at the end of that lease is going to be, okay? But in four years, that Chevy Tahoe's probably going to have 60,000 miles on it, okay? So, you take a four-year-old Chevy Tahoe and go sell it, it's going to sell for a lot more than $9,000, it's probably going to be more like 20, okay? So, anything over that $9,000 that they sell that Tahoe for is going to roll back to us into that new lease, okay? So, that next lease will probably be, could possibly be probably about 80,000 instead of 125 a year. Because when, all the equipment that we've got in these cars, the first set we get, are going to transfer into the next one.
And so, instead of putting other money into repairs that have to be made, other than tires and oil changes?
Yeah, because I know right now I'm pushing probably close to 50,000 this year, just in vehicle maintenance, keeping those Chargers running.
Seems like it's a way to have new equipment all the time, have vehicles with-
And then you'll have a pool of vehicles too at the end if y'all want to keep, that we can roll into other services, or they can roll up into admin, or whatever, whatever they decide to do with them. Which, I only did that on the truck side, just because our admin cars, you know, if I get two investigators, if I, if I end up hiring another sergeant, he's going to be a CID sergeant, and I don't have a car for him. So, you know, it's, everybody in the front office is, I need four unmarked cars, basically, for admin. That includes two investigators, and then we need at least six on patrol.
During, during the lease, is the equipment upgraded, will take out the problem with the radars, how's that handling?
No, the equipment, we're back, the equipment is ours. Yes, yes, that 15,000 that's built into those, that's actually coming from an upfitter, we're buying a truck, they shipped the truck over there to the upfitter, and they just attached that bill onto the lease. At the end of that lease, the equipment's ours, so when the new cars come in, we take the ones we've got over and they switch the equipment out from that vehicle that-
So, is this equipment that would come out of old cars?
Not the first time.
Not the first time, first time it'd be totally brand-new.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, so it'd be totally brand-new.
Yeah, because the equipment I've got in these cars, the switches are going out, the sirens are going out, it's constantly something breaking on. Because I don't know if tho, that equipment came new in those cars, or if they got moved out of other cars and put in there.
It probably was moved.
But they're at least 2016s, so.
Seven years old.
Yeah, and been rode hard out here on these roads. And people not taking care of them.
Well, I think the hand-me-downs would be good too for certain types of vehicles, didn't need a lot of mileage after it turned in. I think it's a good option to consider, I would agree.
I think that's all that I had. Yeah, because I took the dispatch console out this year.
Keith had, Keith had talked about a 10-year pay scale. Right now, we're on a 20-year pay scale, which means in 20 years, you top out, except if you're me. Moving that to 10, a 10-year pay scale, where you top out in 10 years.
Which is more common around the nation, than 20-year top-out?
For recruitment.
Yes.
Yeah, but for people who have worked here 10 years and they're going to top out and not get raises, I don't know. And then you talked about certification pay increase as well.
But they're going to top out in 10 years, so they're not going to be able to afford to start over some rest.
Hopefully, hopefully they would top out in 10 years, hopefully, because that doesn't happen for everyone.
We got about 15 minutes for the next meeting.
What are we talking about there?
Financially? That I don't know, that, that would-
It would be a huge-
A little more discussion.
That would be a huge adjustment because we have several employees who've been here more than 10 years, that we would need to pay them top, top, at the top of their scale. So, that would be a huge adjustment.
The other one was certificate pay, a lot of agencies around here are paying $1,200 per certificate. What I mean by that is you get, when you get out of the police academy, you're a basic police officer, then you get your intermediate, advanced, and master. The intermediate, advanced, and masters is what they pay extra for. Kaufman County's $1,200 per certificate, so you're $3,600 if you have a master, okay? And it's just an incentive to get more people in here that's more trained and capable of handling stuff.
And that's not one time?
That's every year. Yeah, $1,200 per year, per certificate.
What apparently do you?
300?
It's 300, 600, and 900.
But that's not added together. So, basically, $300 per certificate.
So, like a master is for 500 a year?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so you get 300 for a year, intermediate 300 for advanced, and then 300 for master.
And the only other, other than the increase in medical and the COLA for everyone, the other big capital project would be a new website and administration. And this is, the first year cost is around $70,000, which would include a new website, it would include mass notifications, which we already do, we would, we would just be using a different company. It's agenda management, permitting, planning, and zoning, code and ordinances, next request, which I'm not really sure what that is, maybe it's open records. And then archive social, which would archive all of our social media pages. The cost annually for that would be around $30,000 after the first initial cost. But it would completely revamp all of our website and modules that we have.
So, is the 70,000 includes the first-year service? Is that just to make it?
No, that's the first-year service, and then each year after, it would be around $30,000.
And that is or is not in the budget right now?
It is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
And that archive social is going to cover us too?
Yep, all of our social, all of our meeting, all city pages.
That's a definite need.
So, the discussion is, do we want to lease cars? Is there anything that you want to move off the red list, onto the green and blue list? And if so, we need to, what do we want to cut to get there? But we can't do that in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we need to look at where we might find some additional money without cutting somewhere. And I think there is some money, did you move over 100 and some odd thousand for community center?
That's, that's, I took that out of that money. So, we have 500,000 for the community center and around 220,000 left for capital improvements.
500,000 over and above the COVID money?
The ARPA money, yes.
So, we're at two man's, that's correct. Well, what is, thank you Nick, could 20,000, let me take it out and put it somewhere else and somebody move it and move over?
Well, the, with the leasing of the cars, we couldn't take it out of capital outlay, we would have to actually cut something. Because that is a lease and it's going to be due every year, so you don't take it out of capital to move it into. We would have to actually find where to cut to pay for that every year. Because the capital improvement planned after two years would be drained.
Well, it's my recommendation, it's a lesson to go forward and see what that calls for me. And we can come back with recommendations on where those cuts could be made. I'll at least point out either that we need to address.
The only place to cut would be the raises for the COLA for employees.
Oh, truly, there's no-
All of this is 100, all of this added up is 118,000.
Have new spending?
These, everything that they're asking for totals 118,000. So, I don't, we would have to really put our minds together to find 125,000.
So, does that totally get rid of health insurance for 120,000? Or will it get rid of raises for 129,000, so it's three options?
No. No.
Well, that's, that's two options to take into account for lease.
We, we really talked about all of this during our workshops together, and we can go back and put our heads together again. Because we did, we definitely have to have another meeting for sure.
I want to say this, for street departments, I've cut as much as I could.
Yeah, you did.
And I, I got my part here. The total that I could use right now is $747,000. I could spend that without blinking. But I'm not asking for that, I'm asking for, what's that?
10,000.
$10,800 street.
There are certainly no unreasonable asks.
So, that, I, I think, and Joey and Captain Stevens, Chief Stevens, but we've all, we've all cut as much as we could.
It is chief.
None of these are unreasonable asks at all.
So, I mean, and, and you're right, I agree, it makes sense for, you know, documentation there for leasing vehicles. I understand you give way more bang for your buck, but there is no possi, I'll, I'll cut $10,000 to help, but I'm done. Well, as we're spending 150K for two cars anyway. But that's, that's like trying to use the street sales tax money to, to buy a fire. You cannot do that with that money. So, you're saying, well, that's what you're saying, you can't move it, Captain?
I know I'm, I know I'm getting, getting into the next step.
So, is it the general consensus to go and try, what do you want us to do?
Nothing, I don't.
We can go back and talk because we, we, we need to have another budget workshop because I need to bring in the hotel and festival and street sales tax. And we'll go back in and we'll discuss our options and then can bring it back to the table.
I recommend we research the lease discussion.
Ken, this is just a thought I had. With the ARPA funds, now that they've released the restrictions on them, yes, I believe we need a community center. Is there a way that we could scale back a bit and find that, what was it, was it 50,000? No, not banners, but could we scale back and maybe find the extra money in there? Not find it, but take it from there to help these departments?
Not on the leasing, and we would have to ask Jessica if we could-
Maybe animal kennels?
Not, not on the leasing side for me.
No, not on the leasing.
But just about everything that I've asked for, as far as the cameras, Lexi Poe, the dispatch consoles, can all be bought out of that ARPA. Can all be bought out of that CareZac fund.
Yeah, I just think we've got a email brought over from Mondo and it's, it's going to take every bit we've got for the-
It's going to take every, I, I don't see us being able to cut from the ARPA on a community center to fund a few-
Unless we go to a smaller building, I'm okay with that.
Then Jessica said that there was, there's a young man that was going to contact you about additional grant funding that's available.
I've not heard from anyone.
Okay. She was going to have him contact me and I said, whoa, that's out of my authority.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Jessica, so.
I, I definitely, we, we, for the money where it is, we, we're really not going to Mondo, we're now in a place that we're trying to get some hard numbers done. And we, we don't need to make commitments, we know exactly what you're saying.
I agree. We have a workshop scheduled before the regular meeting if we want to bring it back for discussion again.
Okay.
One being discussion regarding recruiting and qualifications for the city manager position. Jacob?
Can we table this item if we, I mean, we're running out of time at this point, so.
Do you want me to put it on the workshop for the 25th?
What do you think?
Well, have you all read the requirement, or the qualifications that Ken put out there? You've got a lot to add or not add or?
I'd just like to say, and I've said it in writing, I'm very happy with the encouragement that we have, Nikki and Janet. I'm not in really any hurry to jump out there with a new city- I'm not in really any hurry to jump out there with the new city manager that we have to spoon-feed six months to a year. And I think council, with the level of cooperation and openness that we have now, is very positive. And let's get some things done. And the city manager, not me, is not the first priority.
What do you all think? I agree. But I do disagree with putting it in the contract that the city manager is required to live within the city limits. I think that's, if it goes for one, it has to go for all department heads. And I just think that's wrong. It's an electronic age. So much is done electronically. I don't think it's necessary to have the person live.
But that's a matter of changing...
That's a charter. We've tried to change that. I think they changed it on the last...
It's the ETJ.
Yeah.
Target review.
Yeah, now we're losing our ETJ.
I think depending on when we hire, he will have to afford that. So he will have to conform to the charter. Now, I know we're having a charter review coming up. If they choose to put that back out and try to remove it, they can remove it to the citizens. But unfortunately, it does say that. I do think it limits us, but it is what the charter says.
But I think to include it in the requirements shouldn't be, it's required by the charter and the charter can change.
Well...
Well, I think what you're, well, you've got, if you're going to hire someone, you have to let them know that it is in the charter at this time and that it's a possibility it won't change.
Right.
And then you hired someone without letting them know that they had to live here.
No, I agree with that. I just don't think it needs to be in the contract.
Oh, you mean where he said they had to move here within a year? I think, you know, I personally think that might contradict what the charter says. Charter does say within a reasonable amount of time. I don't like that terminology personally, but it is what it says.
Yeah.
You know, so I just think that...
But council, I think, well, I think the city attorney always tells the council, we have the partner to define some of that thing.
Reasonable amount, correct.
So we need to do that.
Just sort of deal with what's for a trade or a trade... It's not good enough.
Well, Jennifer, you put this on there. What do you want to do?
I do think it's...
You want to discuss it more or have any...
I would just like to say, I know that I'm not necessarily in a hurry to hire someone. I do think the ladies are doing a wonderful job. But I do think that it may take time to find that person. And I don't want to be rushed into anything or making a hasty decision on somebody because I'm short on time and choosing whatever. So I do, would like eventually, I don't know, never done that part either, but get it out there. I mean, I know the van was looking. I know the Kaufman was looking for an assistant. I mean, if they're looking in this area, they don't even know that we're looking.
Yeah, but to get it out there means that you're going to hire, if you're somebody looking for a job and you get it out there, you're going to assume you're hiring, you're getting in, you're beat up, and all this stuff. And then basically, if you don't hire, the good people may be gone. They'll go somewhere else. So I don't think we want to put anything out there unless we're dead set to move on it.
Well, I mean, if we found the right person, absolutely, in my opinion. I mean, let's all see another reason why, if you found the right person, you wouldn't want to move forward. But I don't want to have a month or two months to find someone and only take the few candidates that applied during that short period of time to find someone.
So you're not between the pros?
I just, I know it's a double edged sword, I guess, to say. Because you can put it out there too soon, you don't hire. But if you found the right person, why would you not? I just don't, I just don't want to settle for anyone. I want to find the right person.
The right person.
I agree.
Well, I think we're on the right tier on there now. I'm very satisfied with that.
Thanks, Ken.
But I'm sure that their places are full and we're here at a time that wears on them as well, you know, so...
Well, I guess we'll put it on the agenda next month, our monthly meeting, who will say yes or no.
We can talk about it at the next workshop.
Yeah, let's talk about it at the next workshop.
That sounds good to me.
All right. So plan is, we're going to go back, we're going to work our numbers and see if we can make some magic happen. Thing is, I, it's only, this sales tax number is only through June and our good months are coming up. So I know that sales tax number is going to probably build, but I don't want to, I want to see it first. So we may have a little bit of money to play with and we'll look at it and bring it back to you for the next workshop.
Okay. I mean, I have no idea because I don't buy that many vehicles in a period of time. If you were to buy cars, I mean, so you're saying we haven't bought cars since like...
We bought one car last year.
And it's been like 2016 or something like that?
We bought one car last year. We bought two in 2020.
Yeah, we buy like, we buy cars like every other year.
So every other year you spend, I know, putting on cost of cars, 100, 150,000 every...
It's drastically gone up. It's normally been around under 100,000. We could get two cars underneath, under 100,000 and we can't do that anymore.
Are those used vehicles?
No.
Those are brand new vehicles?
It's a little different. In 2020, when we bought the street department a new pickup, it was $20,000. I can't find one now for under 35.
Yeah.
The exact identical truck, it's 35.
Speaking on that, we have ordered, we have three trucks. Two for code enforcement and building, and then one for park. We have ordered those trucks in January. We still do not have them.
We don't even have an estimated time.
So there may be...
It's not even built yet.
There may be, we may be moving that money into a fund balance and putting those three trucks back on the, back in the budget for next year. But we're just, we're just moving the money around.
Wouldn't you at least throw down and suffer the same fate in terms of getting the vehicles?
Everybody's that way.
Yeah, it's possible.
And that's why I was looking at enterprise because of the buy-in power they've got. They buy more vehicles than anybody in the country. You know, so with the buy-in power, we could have probably got some quicker, but they won't touch us unless we commit to the whole city eventually being on that program. And I knew that wasn't going to happen.
And this program is through the buy board, which is perfect. I appreciate seeing that on there.
Yes.
Well, I think that's still worth looking at because one way or another, we're in shots of money.
Which, I mean, I've still got 2,000 nine chargers that are sitting up there that are resting out that don't run. They're still sitting up there.
We need to take them to auction.
I've got six...
Because they're devaluing.
I've got six here. Yeah, I'm sending a vehicle sitting up there.
Let me speak on that just a little bit. It takes so much it takes out of their day to get those vehicles inventoried and auctioned. And I've started doing that. I've got mileage on all those. I've got pictures, documentation. And it's been on my agenda to do, just trying to get scheduled to do that with all my other duties, just like everybody else here. We're tasked three, four, five hats.
Well, if you, if we have equipment that we need to auction off, each department should be getting the mileage and getting all that done and finding a price. And we can do that online, correct?
Correct. And I'm doing that, but...
I mean, you shouldn't be doing it all.
Well, I'm just saying, all the vehicles are over at my shop because there's no other place to put them. So they're over at my shop, sitting, and it's actually sitting at the racetrack, the Baltimore racetrack area. So I'm trying to get all this done and do my duties, just like everybody else.
Well, try counting...
We are tasked to the T. And I want to speak out of turn. I shouldn't. But these two ladies, they can't get their job done. And putting the city manager on their path, and you're saying they're doing such a good job, they probably are. But they are swamped.
Yes, they are. I know they are.
And it's very difficult to get stuff done without a city manager and then them doing their job. So again, I spoke out of turn and I apologize if I hurt anybody's feelings, but it is what it is. So again, I'm working on getting the auction vehicles. I just have to get it together.
I've got four more instead of the Gabriel.
I got to get it together, pictures, and submit it to city management and/or work to help me get that to the auctioneer place. So it is in the works. It's just a slow work.
What about an auctioneer coming in like they used to in the past?
I don't think we're getting as much money for them.
Correct. Pros and cons of that is...
They'll take a cut.
You using Renee Baker's?
I was going to. And again, I got to get all my documents in a row. But pros and cons of that is several euros go, we did that. A, I don't know, a vehicle we could have got $2,000 for, walked up to lock for 100 bucks. Jerry Lowe, our mechanic, grabbed that in a horse. So great to him, great for a person that can do that. But it's to the fault of the city
Right.
for not getting more out of that vehicle. For example, the Mustang we sold a few years ago, 35 grand out of that. There's no way that would have come for 35 grand for someone sitting here at an auction in a park.
Yeah.
So I, again, that's on my to-do list. I'm trying to get that higher on my agenda. But I got road work to do. I got ditches to dig. I got parks to manage. So it's a slow process for me. I can only dedicate maybe an hour a day just to get this stuff done. And I don't get overtime paid, but I still stay until 5 o'clock every day trying to do my work, just like everybody else.
Before you run, you can answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the two of you, as wearing all your hats, do you have enough support staff to help you?
Yeah, we actually, she says no. We actually just brought in a temp that's helping with minutes and things like that through September. But we wouldn't, we don't even have enough support staff to help us do our normal jobs, let alone...
Cross-train or anything?
Yeah. I'm good.
I've shared my thoughts with, I think, all of you. I like my job. I don't like the city manager job. Here I am. I'll do it for as long as you guys think, but...
I'm here five more years.
That's how I feel.
Five more years.
Five more years. Hopefully, we'll have one more.
So in your opinion, do you want us to look as soon as possible?
I'm with April. I don't want to just settle. I think if you have five great candidates, I don't want you to just pick one to pick one. I don't want you to pick the best one of five if they don't fit what you guys are looking for. I don't want to settle.
But if you never put it out there, you're never going to know. Who's going to walk through the door? Just because you interview 10 people, doesn't mean you have to hire any else. But at least you're looking and seeing what's out there.
And I would, I would like some sort of confirmation that by the end of the year, we are close to getting somebody. Because that's about as long as my mental health is going to last.
And we don't want to, I don't think anybody wants to see you just burn out.
Okay, I want to appreciate, I thank you for asking that question now because they're the ones that maybe asked that question, not... Again, forgive me for speaking out of turn, but y'all's opinions are great. But it affects those two ladies. It affects all three of us.
Well, nobody really sees what goes on. Rita's gotten the most interaction. It's overwhelming. We are all overwhelmed, but we're always overwhelmed anyway, so...
When I get overwhelmed by your passion and I talk a lot, and so that should tell you right now, it's overwhelming for me trying to get their job done on top of city manager duties. It's very, very difficult to get stuff done.
And I can say that there has been, since Jeff has left, just a decline of leadership because we don't have a senior leader. So that's difficult, working now with these people who are our laterals.
And I'm thinking, I apologize for being straightforward and not...
I had that sense of the situation. I feel like I talk to everybody enough that, I mean, that's, it's visible. But it's, the stress of it is visible. And I don't want y'all to be in that position for too, which is why I pushed for it to be on this agenda. But I...
I'm ready. Starting every...
Could we at least list it on TMIL?
Well, let's, I guess, put it on the next agenda to vote or to move forward with how you guys want to do it.
As far as the qualifications go, the listed qualifications, I didn't see anything on there. I'm certainly not qualified to, you know, pick those qualifications apart. So everything I feel like was on there was, I feel like we can put it out there. It's a good list of what we want.
All right.
Do I need to say for this actually?
No.
All right.
Don't care.